Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the special city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, November 18th, 2019. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
My Pledge Allegiance to the Flag-
...of the United States of America-
...and to the Republic for which it stands, on which it is under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Mr. Dahl. You had a point of clarification for us tonight?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a matter of procedure, we need to make just a real quick little record that this is a regular meeting, not a special meeting of the council. And there's a way to do that, and there's a motion that I've prepared and Councilmember Urban will make. This is because the charter requires that at the first regular meeting after an election, you have an organizational meeting at which you swear in new members. And that's always what the city has done, and it complies with the charter. We have, however, the agenda for tonight is set up as a special meeting, which makes it not technically a regular meeting, which makes it not a meeting at which you could do that organizational work and swear people in. Everyone wants that to be the case so that we can have that swearing in and new terms of office can commence tonight. And the way to do that is to take a motion to waive the council rules. This is not a charter problem. That's a council rule issue, to allow this meeting to be designated as a regular meeting and also to retain the November 25th meeting as a regular meeting. There's nothing wrong with having more than two regular meetings in a month if you so provide by motion waiving the council rules. I've prepared a motion that does all of that rather simply, and then we can just get on with the business of the evening. Councilmember Urban has that motion.
Thank you. The Chair will recognize Councilmember Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to suspend council rules, declare this meeting a regular meeting of the council, and to retain the November 25th meeting also as a regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please bowl the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet you have the city council minutes for October 14, 2019, October 28th, 2019, special study session, or study session notes, excuse me, of October 21, 2019, and special study session notes for August 26, 2019. Unless there are corrections to the minutes, then we will let them stand as read. Are there any corrections? We will show them approved as presented with the thanks to the clerk. We'll now go to our proclamations and ceremonies. So if the mayor pro tem would join me at the podium, we'll go from there. We're pleased to have finished another outstanding election with the thanks to our elections personnel that run these. I think it was a fair and open and well-fought election, and I want to personally thank all of the citizens who stood for election, whether you were successful or not. I think it's a great, it's what our community needs, is people that are willing to stand up and talk to their fellow citizens about running for office. So to those, if you were not successful, I hope you will come back perhaps and try it again. To those who were successful, congratulations. And we are going to go into our official swearing-in ceremony, and I'd like to invite Judge Randall to join me here at the podium. Judge?
Yeah, does he have any particular order? Yes, starting with Judy Hutchinson. Who's the best place for people to take pictures?
Okay. Who's doing our photography tonight? Where's the best places to be?
We're fighting about the camera.
We have a good, robust fight, you know? That's always good to have. That sounds, that's good, Judge, right there, right in front.
Judge, do you want the microphone? I tell you what, why don't I come over here and I'll hold it? Why don't I hold it at the same time? Ms. Hutchinson, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Judy Hutchinson.
I, Judy Hutchinson.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens.
To all citizens.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the city council member.
District one.
District one.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Rachel Hulteen.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and the ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
District two.
District two.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
All right. Mr. Stites, please raise your right hand. Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of the state of Colorado.
Of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens in the city.
To all citizens in the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
District three.
District three.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Ready? Please raise your right hand. I, Valerie Nosler Beck.
I, Valerie Nosler Beck.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Declare and affirm.
Declare and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
District four.
District four.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. All right. Please remind your own friend. Swear your, yeah, your one friend. I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
District four.
District four.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Very good. Congratulations. All right. Please remind your own friend. Swear your, yeah, your one friend. I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
District four.
District four.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Very good. Congratulations. All right. Please remind your own friend. Swear your, yeah, your one friend. I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
I, Steve Kirkpatrick.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
[applause] I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
[applause] I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
District three.
District three.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. [applause] Ready? Please raise your right hand. I, Valerie Nosler Beck.
I, Valerie Nosler Beck.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Declare and affirm.
Declare and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. [applause] All right. Please remind your own friend. Swear your, yeah, your one friend. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. [applause] All right. Mr. Miller. I'm reading Mr. Miller. I'm gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. [applause] All right. Mr. Miller, I'm gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
The duties of the office of city treasurer.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. [applause] All right. Mr. Miller, I'm gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
[applause] All right. Mr. Miller, I'm gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
[applause] All right. Mr. Miller, I'm gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
[applause] All right. Mr. Miller, I'm gonna raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Miller.
I, Christopher Miller.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.[1111.81]
You all and remember your service. Kristi Davis, no stranger to our city, has served District Two on council and on the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority since 2011. Kristi, thank you very much. George Pond has served District Three on council since 2011. Priority Council Mr. Pond served on the Parks and Recreation Commission from 2008 to 2010 and on the Planning Commission from 2010 to 2011. Mr. Pond, thank you. Thank you. Larry Matthews has served District Four on council since 2015. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Janelle Shaver has a long rap sheet with the city. Ms. Shaver has served Wheat Ridge as city clerk since 2011. She also served as a city councillor from 1995 to 2001. Additionally, she has represented Wheat Ridge on the Jeffco Community Corrections Board since 1996 and continues to have that post and was a member of the Channel Seven Elections Review Committee. Janelle, thank you so much for your service to our city. Thank you all for all of your service and dedication to the people of Wheat Ridge. You've done great, great work and we hope that you will continue to stay involved in our community. Thanks again. That concludes our regular special city council meeting. We will adjourn this meeting now and in just a minute or two, start our study session. Oh, okay. So, we're not ready to... Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was a little ahead of myself. I was reading on the wrong thing. We are not adjourned. Do I have any changes to the agenda as it's been presented? Then we will move, we will continue with the agenda as it's been presented. I would like now to go to citizens' right to speak. And this is on our regular special meeting and Judy Capra has signed up to speak. Ms. Capra, please come to the podium and adjust the microphone so it's convenient. If you would please give us your first name and last name and spell your last name and give us your address. We'll have three minutes to speak.
Judy Capra, C-A-P-R-A. Tell me when you're ready. Okay. Judy Capra, C-A-P-R-A, 7070 West 43rd Avenue, and that's Wheat Ridge. Tonight, I'm here to represent Save Our Neighborhoods, the citizen group that opposed 2E. And first, we wanted to thank all of the outgoing city council members who have already outgone. We really appreciated all the hours they've spent meeting and reading and listening to us. Yeah, that's true, even though we didn't always agree with the decisions. And we want to thank all the candidates, because I always realized that running for an election was a big deal, but now I appreciate that even more. It's a lot of work. And as for the new council members, congratulations. I know if I were sitting in your seats, I'd be thinking, oh my, what did I get into? But instead, from this side, I'm more wondering, okay, what are their stances going to be on the issues? And finally, and importantly, we want to thank all of the people who took the time to vote, because every vote does count. The voter turnout for 2E tells us that people do care and that we were impressed by the overwhelming support that people showed for protecting not only the areas near our homes, but for caring about the character of the city itself. And I think they made it clear that we don't want change to our residential zones. So, Save Our Neighborhoods will continue to have a presence, but I think we've all learned something from the experience and I hope that we can work smarter. Thanks again and good luck.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed to speak at public comment. Is there anyone who is not signed who would like to speak at this time? You may do so by coming to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone else, so we will include our citizens' right to speak and go to city manager's matters. Mr. Goff.
I would also like to thank the outgoing council members, elected officials. You get to know these folks after eight years very well and I appreciate everything they do. And it's a very difficult job for those out there who think it's not. So, good luck to our new folks and it's not that difficult of a job. It'll be fun. And just real quickly, I think I mentioned at one of our last meetings, everybody keeps asking us about Hacienda, Colorado. When is it going to open? And if you've driven by recently, there's a sign out there. February 18th is the date, so not out into March. So, we're excited about that. So, I'll leave it with that.
City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. It's an honor to work for local government and I've really been honored to work for the council as it's been seated the last term. And I'm looking forward to working with the whole council again and including the new members. So, thanks for giving me the opportunity to do what I really enjoy the most.
Thank you. Our next portion of the is elected officials matters. Are there any elected officials that have a matter they would like to bring to our citizens at this time? Please let me know. Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted to, amidst all the other things that were happening in the last couple of weeks, a great program that happened at Circle K last Tuesday, I believe, and their conserve program got kicked off. And I just wanted to thank everyone for their support in coming out and our sustainable Wheat Ridge group was there as well. And it's all part of those efforts that we are moving towards in Wheat Ridge. So, thank you for everybody who supported that program.
Thank you. Do we have any other elected officials matters? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank all of the outgoing council members for their hard work. I know that as one of the newer people on here, that they really helped me acclimate to the seat and to the job responsibilities. So, I wanted to thank all of them. I'm sad to see them go, but I'm also very glad to see all of you on the dais. And I wanted to congratulate each and every one of you on your race and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials matters, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Councilman Dozeman's remarks regarding our previous members. And I want to extend a dedic gratitude to those that have served on this dais and the amount of dedication that goes into that, as well as those that ran for office and were successful and encourage you to live by the example that they set. And just want to, I'm excited about the new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials matters. And I would also like to congratulate and thank the councillors who have completed their term and heartily welcome the new councillors to the dais. We are glad that you are here. You represent your community. And I hope that you will take this opportunity to embrace a collegial atmosphere and know that we can talk amongst ourselves. We can have rigorous debate. But I hope that we will always respect the rights of the others, that we will keep it civil and in great decorum. And I will strive to do that. If I may do anything, to make your tenure on this council more enjoyable and more productive for our citizens, I will do my best. So, welcome and we're glad to have you here. Is there any more business to come before this meeting? Then we will adjourn this meeting. And we'll be moving on to our study session agenda. All right. I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge. Yes? Oh, I can hold up. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All set, Mr. Clerk? Then I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for November 18th, 2019. We will begin with public comment. I have one person signed up to speak, Katie Schiebler. If you'd like to come to the microphone and adjust it and give us your first name and last name, if you'd spell your last name and give us your address.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Katie Schiebler. It's a long last name. It's S-C-H-E-I-B-E-L-E-R. My address, I actually live in Lakewood, 2200 Teller Street, Lakewood. But I have family that works in Wheat Ridge and I regularly work in Wheat Ridge. And I was asked by a couple of people who at least were in this room to come and speak on this issue because I'm known in the area for somebody who works regularly with your animal control, as well as Lakewood's Animal Control and Edgewater's, and oftentimes with Foothills as well. So, I work to reunite lost animals in the city. People contact me regularly just to do that very thing. And so, I thought it would be useful for me to come and just say that whatever the city can do to maintain a relationship with Foothills and vice versa, and with the citizens in terms of community outreach, I guess would be the best way to describe that and continue that effort, definitely needs to be done. Additionally, and this is more just public comment on what I think is useful in terms of reuniting lost animals, Foothills does a fabulous job of that. They're one of the best in the state, if not the best in the state, for return to owner percentages and live release rates, which they may or may not get into. Something that I think would be useful for citizens of Wheat Ridge and the other communities that Foothills serves is there used to be a public page where somebody like me or whoever, if they found a lost animal or they lost an animal, they could post to that public page, similar to Craigslist, if you want to compare it to something, where they wouldn't necessarily have to bring the animal to Foothills and they could post and they could communicate with people like me to try to reunite that lost animal. That page went down several months ago and in my communications with one of the coordinators at Foothills, they don't have any intent of bringing that back. And I think that that's something that should be looked at again. I think it would eliminate many of the animals, the need for many animals to come to Foothills. Additionally, it helps people like me reunite them across various boundaries. Something else that I think is useful, that's useful for both citizens and for the shelter employees or volunteers, is the way that they have their website. It's very easy to use. However, for better reunite rates, I think that they should look at separating dogs and cats, because when you're somebody like me who runs 22 Facebook pages and looks at hundreds of animals a day, it's easier to separate those two. So, something just to consider when you're, you know, working with them on what the city would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak at this time. Is there anyone who's not signed up who would like to speak on any agenda item on our study session? I don't see anyone, so we will complete our citizen comment and move to agenda item number one. This is Foothills Animal Shelter update from the executive director, Mr. Goff.
Yeah, I'll have Mary Ann Schilling, our assistant to the city manager, introduce this topic real quick. Mary Ann is also our board member who represents the city of Wheat Ridge on the Foothills Animal Board. So, I'll just have her introduce our executive director.
Hi, good evening. Mary Ann Schilling. Tonight, we have Connie Howard, who is here from the Foothills Animal Shelter. She's the executive director. She's been here about a year and she's going to be giving a brief introduction and then an overview of the services that the Foothills Animal Shelter provides. Additionally, we do have staff support in case you guys have any questions related to any animal services questions. Thank you.
Good evening. For those of you new to council, I wanted to make sure that you understand how Foothills Animal Shelter operates. We are an organization, municipal in nature, that we operate under an intergovernmental agency agreement. And we serve all of Jefferson County and the municipalities as well. So, yes, some of the tax dollars, as well as licensing revenue, goes to support Foothills, but we also raise money with our nonprofit arm to run the organization. I have given all of you our annual report for last year and I've also created a short PowerPoint and you're welcome to interrupt me at any time. Also, any kind of animal control questions, I asked Phil to be here. He's sitting over there saying he's not going to speak, but often what happens when I come and do these presentations is you end up having questions that are much more animal control related. So, I thought it was important that he be here. So, these are last year's numbers and then I also have some 2019 numbers for you as well. I'm going to give you an overview of the organization as a whole and then also give you numbers for your own city. And again, to look at funding, part of your revenue comes from your citizens licensing. So, anywhere we can promote licensing will then offset the taxed dollars that have to be spent to meet those two obligations. So, last year, the shelter took in 7,775 animals. We fostered 749 of those. Those animals needed additional care or just time to get old enough to be adopted. We did 4,300 adoptions and we transferred a return to owner 2,178 animals. We microchipped 3,000 animals and we'll talk briefly about how microchipping has been expanded to try to get our return to owner rate even higher than it has been in the past. In Jefferson Countywide, we licensed 40,539 dogs primarily. We place every healthy and safe animal. And what I mean by that is sometimes they come in not healthy and we do have a veterinary clinic. Sometimes they need additional behavioral support and we'll talk about that later very briefly. But every animal that we can, we adopt out. As the citizen said, we have a very high live release rate and we do our best to reunite animals. We align our policy with the needs of the community. And so, in 2019, we launched a licensing incentive program. So, anyone that wants to purchase a license will get a free microchip. They come into our organization and get that microchip for free. It is a permanent form of identification that will help reunite that animal. So, it's an incentive to increase our licensing rates, but it also is a way to have permanent identification on the animal. We also provide public vaccination clinics. Again, we're selling licenses. We're doing those clinics at very low cost for those folks that can't afford full veterinary services. We also run public spay-neuter clinics, again, at low cost for the public. And in Wheat Ridge citizens, last year, 1,701 of them purchased licenses. So, as you know, the population of your city and probably the population of your dogs, our licensing is not where we'd like it to be. And any help that we can get in that arena would benefit all of the animals, as well as what you have to spend on supporting Foothills Animal Shelter. We are very much a part of socially conscious sheltering, which means that we make sure that every pet has access to the facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week, either through animal control or through our night drop cages. And this is without exception. Often, a family is in crisis and needs a safe place to put a pet immediately. We launched a, expanded a program to provide 10 days of free care for folks in need. So, this is whether their family members hospitalized, a family member has passed away, a woman has to go into a battered women's shelter, any of those kinds of issues, we're going to provide 10 days at no cost for them so that they can make arrangements to find that home, that animal a safe place to live while they're in crisis. We ensure that every unwanted and homeless pet has a safe place to go. And last, this year alone, 26 animals have benefited from that protective custody program that I just referred to. And like I said, we just expanded it. We also now are doing, for anyone that's been evicted, we're also providing 10 days of free service. Seven animals were placed on police holds from your city and this is either arrests or evictions. And 21 animals were surrendered because of code violations. Most of the municipalities have a number of animals that you can own legally. One-third of all owner surrenders are due to financial reasons. In 2018, 89 animals were surrendered by your citizens and 307 stray animals were brought in either by animal control or citizens. And as of November 2019, 66 animals were surrendered by your citizens and another 132 animals were brought in either by animal control or citizens. By the numbers this year, we've had 35 animals brought in by your officers for court holes. These are animals that had either cruelty charges against the owners or were pulled because of, in this case, for instance, these 16 purebred puppies. This gentleman was selling them out of the back of a pickup truck illegally at a Starbucks. A citizen got involved and helped us, animal control, track down these puppies in the back of a pickup truck at a local motel and those animals were brought to us. Almost every single one of them had to go to emergency care. They were too young and in very poor health. We know that this ring has been going around in Jefferson County where these animals are being sold. And unfortunately, the people that were selling them were never again found. 25 animals were brought in for end-of-life services. Again, we provide that at a very low cost to citizens, so it's not a barrier to them getting the help that they need. And another 130 were received for cremation, another service we provide. We have a full-service veterinary clinic. And what I mean by full service for our own shelter animals, we do not provide or compete with the veterinarians in the community. We provide basic services to the public. But we do use those veterinary services to make sure that animals that are in need get those services. So, for instance, the puppy on the right was a puppy that had been hit by a car and had 12 fractures. He's now, just finally, he came in in February and he's now just getting adopted this week. He had a series of 12 different surgeries. So, our veterinary services, like I said, 2,209 shelter animals were spayed and neutered, 951 public animals, and we provided 5,234 vaccines to over 3,000 animals through our vaccine clinics. We also enhance the human-animal bond through safe placements and post-adoption support. And that support can often take the needs of the behavior. So, with less overpopulation, as you probably all know, there's not hordes of puppies and kittens anymore coming through our doors, we're seeing more and more broken animals, either behaviorally or medically. So, our behavior program focuses on those animals that may need additional behavioral work to help them be adoptable. So, this is fear, this is dog-dog stuff, this is just general, not having been socialized. And 309 animals benefited from that program last year. We do foster a culture of transparency and we, as a county-wide organization, are always willing and able to talk about issues. We provide our length of stay, we'll provide our live release rate, we'll provide the number of animals we euthanize at any time. We actually perform more euthanasia for the public than we do for shelter animals. And like I said, the changing face of animal welfare is that more and more animals are requiring more and more care to help them through the adoption process. Our shelter revenue for last year was three, almost three and a half million dollars. Municipal fees, this in-service fees made up a big portion of it. However, we also have a private nonprofit arm and this year, we're scheduled to raise $1 million with that. Last year, we raised $840,000. We have 464 volunteers and last year, that equated to over 17 full-time employees. We couldn't do it without the volunteers. And our expenses, as you can imagine, healthcare is a big part of that. And then welfare, behavior and sheltering, and then running our nonprofit arm and community engagement, and then finally, our support services. The cost-benefit analysis to you. So, the cost per capita to run animal control facilities in the United States ranges between $1.50 to $6, over $6. We're at $2.37 per capita. Last year, Wheat Ridge citizens adopted 109 animals from us. And Americans spend an average of $125 a month. So, if you do the math, that returns over $200,000 back to the community every time someone adopts. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions of council on the Foothills Animal Shelter? Ms. Hoppy.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. I know that you're a newer executive director, so thank you for coming and introducing yourself to us and giving us this detailed information about this program. I know it's in our budget each year and so it's nice to have more information about where those budget monies are going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Weaver, excuse me.
I also wanted to thank you and more on a personal end, since I liaise a lot with both community services and animal control. And Foothills has just been amazing. My personal experience is that I had some goats that were stolen off the green belt this last year and ended up adopting some goats. And what I was really amazed with was how well community services and animal control connected with you all. And there was such great communication. And I really think it's sort of an unsung praise that is happening in Wheat Ridge because so many of us have animals. And so, I just want to thank both community services and Foothills Animal Shelter. You guys just do an excellent job.
Thank you. I'm sorry you never got your goats back, too.
Well, thank you, but it...
It is interesting how many goats we do see.
Yeah.
People don't expect that.
Well, I've got a new one.
I know the goat. And I want to address the citizens' concern about our website. We actually, if our budget is passed, which is Thursday this week, we do have in that budget monies to create a new website. That's been part of our issue, is that our website is quite old and so it's been very difficult to make the changes that we also want. So, like I said, it will happen next year. And those concerns are ones that we have internally as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just like, so the new council has a perspective of the expense in our budget. We didn't put this in the memo, but for 2020 budget, we have just over $60,000 budgeted that goes for the operations of the Foothills Shelter. And there's also facility debt. If you've been around long enough, you remember that Foothills Animal Shelter... If you've been around long enough, you remember that Foothills Animal Shelter used to be the T-Mac, Table Mountain Animals Center, which was in Wheat Ridge at the Clear Creek Crossing Development. And probably about 10 years ago now, has it been 10 years? We built a new facility on the Jefferson County Fairgrounds, and all the cities are contributing to some of that debt for that facility, and our contribution is just over $27,000 next year.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Again, for things that people don't, may not know what's happening in terms of police and animals and Foothills Animal Shelter, there's some really great programs offered through Wheat Ridge Police around sort of community watch and walking dogs. I participated in one about a month ago, I can't remember the officer's name who might have run that workshop, but it was just a really great thing. I want to let everybody know in Wheat Ridge that the police do these workshops for citizens around walking their dogs, and just how, as a pet owner, you can be a really active citizen, and they also commented all of the connections they have with Foothills and how you support that process with citizens, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Saltine.
First of all, I want to thank you. When I was growing up, my mom was the president of the board at Dumb Friends League for years and years, so I spent a good part of my childhood in an animal shelter, and really appreciated all the good work that organizations like yours do in the community, and it's, a lot of it's invisible to people, but has a really huge impact on the welfare of animals. So I just, first and foremost, want to thank you for the work you do and your organization. I have a question. So when you are talking about the licensing revenue, you know, directly impacting the financial success, what are things that we can do to help support that? I know when I get, you know, my dogs get their shots, it's pretty clear when we go do that, but what are some things that, you know, us as either city council members or community members, like, how can we help promote that, so that we're doing the easiest pathway to success for you?
So, we'll be reaching out to your public information offices, as well as any kind of opportunity to partner publication-wise. We also, so I think number one, awareness, that licensing is required, it's the law. Secondarily, that rabies is an issue in the state of Colorado. For those that you don't know, we have rabies in raccoons, skunks, bats, and it's ongoing. So licensing is tied to rabies vaccinations, so I think number one, getting the word out, number two, allowing us to partner in any kind of publications you have. So, like with the city of Arvada, we are allowed to put an insert into the water bills. So the other thing to recognize, that any direct fees that are collected versus, for licenseings, will drop your assessment. So it's not an either-or, it's married together, so the amount of money that you won't have to collect and pass on to us, if we can bring the licensing revenue up, is a win-win. And it does protect the community. You know, anytime a dog bites and doesn't have a rabies vaccination, Phil has to bring it to us, and we have to impound it for 10 days. That's a cost to citizens as well. So I think awareness, working with anyone in your government that, either public information offices, or any ways that we might be able to get the word out, would be ideal. And we're happy to partner with you. We actually have monies in the budget to promote licensing, so some of the cities are more active with it than others, so I'm definitely always on board. And like I said, we do the free microchip, and with licensing, we're going to launch a free ID tag with licensing as well, if you have an idea that we haven't thought of, because one of the challenges is licensing has been declining, not increasing, and we can't put a real handle on that, except for that Jefferson County Sheriff's Department used to run the program, so it was very enforcement, the notice was very enforcement-based, and it came from the sheriff, and I think that's why it got opened more. So we've gone from $1.2 million in revenue down to $800,000. Granted, I've only been here a year, but I've worked in animal welfare my whole career, so it's not new to me. Like I said, if we can all come up with some solutions around promoting licensing, it's a win-win. The original goal of the IGA was that licensing would pay completely, but it hasn't worked out that way.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Howard, thank you very much. Very nice presentation, and thank you for bringing that to us. Okay, we will move on to agenda item number two. This is massage businesses ordinance. Ms. Goff.
Yeah, Mr. Dollar, City Attorney, will lead this, and we do have some staff here, I believe? Yes, we do, from the police department, to help answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me just get to that section here.
Counsel, I want to give you a quick overview of this topic area, massage therapy and massage businesses, massage parlors. The city has, pardon me, in one way or another, regulated massage therapy and massage parlors for decades, but the authority to do that has changed based upon changes in state law over the years. Back in the 90s and up to about 2006, the state of Colorado, or, excuse me, 2015, the state of Colorado kind of occupied that field, and the city changed its regulations to really defer to the state statute, pardon me. In, I think, 2015, however, the state legislature basically got out of the business of regulating massage parlors. Pardon me, I just ate the wrong thing, I guess. No, I'm good, I'm good. Massage parlors, and that meant the city needed to reengage in its regulation of massage parlors. And to be blunt, there's both illicit and illicit massage therapy, and if you go to a massage envy kind of operation, that's a legitimate massage therapy business, but there are, as you're well aware, or you've probably seen, other massage businesses that, and will allow the police department to weigh in, can be fronts for illegal activity, prostitution, and human trafficking. And so cities across the state and across the country wrestle with this issue, and the city's approach presently is to regulate legitimate massage therapy in one way, and massage parlors in another. And if you're going to be a massage parlor and not have massage therapy licenses, and act like sort of a regular massage business, thank you very much. I said I didn't need it, but...
It's what you said, but...
It's what I said. But if you're not going to do that, and you're going to be a massage parlor, then the city's regulations read a lot like the city's regulations for sexually-oriented businesses, so restricting them to certain zone districts, distance limitations, and the city has that on the books. But of the massage parlor businesses in the city, of which there are at least 10 or so a dozen, we're intentionally not going to identify those businesses, it'd be inappropriate to identify them on the public record. We want to address regulation of these businesses, but it's inappropriate to say the business at XYZ address. So I'm intentionally telling you I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to answer a question if you ask me where they are. But the city's approach has been to treat them as, sort of like sexually-oriented businesses, so zone them into industrial district. As it turns out, all of those businesses in town in the city right now are in commercial districts. They're not in those zone districts. The tools that the city has, or at least on the books now, to address this are difficult, and I'm going to defer to the police department here in a minute to tell you sort of their, the challenge that they have around regulating illegal massage activity, while at the same time not unduly preventing legitimate massage therapy businesses from being a business, and operating and providing an appropriate service. And that's, as you can see, a real challenge, and there's a real tension there, real conflict, how do you pick your way through that? The city of Aurora has enacted an ordinance recently that they believe is really helping them make that distinction, and so what, one of the things we're going to be recommending here tonight is that the council look at some elements of a proposed ordinance here in Wheat Ridge that would draw from, not exclusively, but draw from some of the elements that the city of Aurora has come up with, to, again, try to draw that line, try to walk that line, try to make that distinction appropriately, still within the bounds of the law. So with that in mind, I think I'd like to defer to Commander Guadnella, who authored in large part, although we did some editing to him, and he was very gracious about letting us edit his memo, but authored the memo that you see in your pack, and after, he's kind of described what the police department's concerns are and the recommended approach. I would like to then take you through some of the recommendations that we're making to get a head nod, yes or no? The output of that would be an ordinance. We won't be drafting an ordinance tonight, but we'd be getting direction from you to do so, if you're so inclined. Commander?
All right, well, thank you. First and foremost, I would just like to take a minute to welcome all our new council members, our new city clerk, and our returning council members, and thank you all for your service. My name's Darrell Guadnella, I am the Investigations Bureau Commander for our police department, and with me is Detective Charles Hemming. I've asked him to join us today. He is currently assigned in our Special Investigations Unit, and he serves as our vice and intelligence detective. So his job primarily gets a whole lot of different things on the intelligence side, but on the vice side, he investigates or lands in his lap any number of old-fashioned vice crimes, whether they're alcohol-related, marijuana-related, prostitution-related, sexually-oriented business-related, whatever it might be. So he's a subject matter expert in this area, and he's been very instrumental in looking at Aurora's draft, and seeing what they've passed, and putting together a lot of this proposal, and bringing back some suggested tools that might help us address this issue. And I want to talk briefly about kind of the why we're asking for permission to go this direction, and really, at its core, it boils down to two reasons. One is the issues that we're seeing really do, at their core, have an impact on the quality of life of the citizens of Wheat Ridge. Whether you're a business owner, and your business is next to one of these businesses, whether you're in the city just to shop, and you pass by, or you're a homeowner that has a property adjacent to one of these businesses, that can be very impactful. And the other reason is Detective Hemming has gone above and beyond trying to address this issue through the means available to us at this time. That is, tickets have been written, people go to court, but at the core of the issue, this business is a very lucrative one, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, and we just don't have the tools to make it stop currently. And successful businesses are the backbone of any community. We love our businesses here, and when they do well, we do well. Unfortunately, some of the businesses have a little bit more of a propensity to perhaps fall into some illegal-type behavior, so they're regulated a little bit more stringently. Marijuana's one, liquor's one. Heck, I went to buy cough syrup for my son two weeks ago, and I had to show an ID to buy the cough syrup. So we regulate all sorts of these, and ultimately, trafficking in the sex trade is not uncommon, and unfortunately, businesses of this nature use the cover of a legitimate massage business in order to do this. Let me ask you, if any of you have ever gone in for a massage, and while you're in the massage parlor or business, you've accidentally wandered into the living quarters of whoever is providing the massages? Probably the answer is no, unless you're at a home-based business. You've probably not ever noticed a gauntlet of surveillance video cameras in the parking lot and on the buildings. You've probably never had to be buzzed into one of these facilities in order to get a massage in the middle of the day, and you've probably never woken up at about 2:30 a.m. with a knot in your back and been able to drive right over and get in. All these are red flags, so to speak, of some of these illicit businesses, and Detective Hemming can certainly answer questions with regard to these and more of what he's saying, but at the bottom line, the people who operate these businesses have a disregard for the laws that we have in place. More problematic is the fact that these businesses solicit people into the city who also have a slight disregard for our laws, because prostitution, pandering, these sorts of things are illegal. And what ends up happening is we have two parties who tacitly agree to engage in this sort of illegal activity. Best-case scenario, nothing bad happens. Worst-case scenario is there's fights, or arguments, or disagreements, or worse. I have a friend who is a magistrate in Arapahoe County, and years ago, I asked him how he got into criminal law, and he told me a story that when he started out in the legal profession, he was an oil and gas attorney in Georgia, and he was asked by his company to research the total fines and surcharges and costs, and any negative financial impact that the company might encounter if they went ahead and disregarded a lot of the laws that were in place that governed how they did their oil and gas business. He did this, and he came up with a great big figure, and he presented it to his company. And much to his chagrin, his company said, "All right," and their business decision was, "We're going to go ahead and break all those laws, because this is so lucrative that even if we have to pay these fines, it is worth it to us as a business to do that." He soon got out of the oil and gas business and got into criminal law, but I think our massage-oriented businesses, our sexually explicit businesses like this, operate in a very similar fashion. They have no problem breaking the law, because at the core, money is the issue. We already have laws against prostitution. Legitimate businesses bring positive outcomes to the community, but I don't think these illicit ones bring anything good. They sure don't pay a full amount of tax on any illicit gains they make, they don't bring in a savory element in our community to spend money, they're not law-abiding, and overall, they don't make the city a better place. Now, while some might consider what I'm talking about to be, you know, one of the oldest professions under the sun, what is a little bit different here is that these aren't always circumstances where the participants are consenting, albeit that they're paid for their services. Human trafficking is very alive, it's well, and it is far closer to home than you might think. In fact, before I came down here, the Carata Association of Victim Advocates is having a training in our police department room on human trafficking and how to deal with that. It is very much alive and well. Now, people have different thoughts on human trafficking, and what it is, and how it manifests themselves, and probably whatever your thought is on that, probably some measure of that is true and is taking place. From an international perspective, folks are brought over from other countries, and their employers, and I'll say employer loosely with some sarcasm, will hold on to their government-issued documents and convince them that the culture in America is far different than it actually is. And when you hold on to somebody's documents, and they're from a country where you have to have your papers with you all the time, or you could get in trouble by the police, you can condition people to not ever want to leave wherever you have them. In addition, they can charge rent, or any number of other exorbitant costs, to the people that they employ, to where they never get ahead, and they barely break even, and they're sort of find themselves in this indentured servitude. Even if many of them were able to leave or walk away from these places, they have no place to go. My wife was a prosecutor in Arapahoe County for a number of years, and she prosecuted a case quite some time ago, where an Indonesian woman was imprisoned in a house in Aurora for 12 years. For 12 years, she was brought over under the banner of being a domestic servant. For 12 years, she worked in the house, doing all the cooking, all the cleaning, she was a sex slave to the male folks in the house, and for 12 years, she could not escape this. And what the most disturbing part to me of all of this was, was at trial, it came out that all the neighbors that lived around this woman, or this family, they knew everybody in the family, but none of them, for 12 years, had any idea that this woman lived in this house. This is something that is very much alive, and it's very much something that we need to address. Interstate or interstate trafficking is also not uncommon. We have runaways or drug addicts who, for one reason or other, fall into these issues. Some have histories of prostitution, but ultimately, any of them that are in the trafficking industry answer to someone, and they work for someone. And whether it's a lack of sophistication on their part, or simply them not being very intelligent, I think it's a mistake oftentimes to cast a lot of these people out as being consenting adults. Most often, they are not that. So the bottom line is, there are massage businesses like this operating in Wheat Ridge right now, and despite all of our efforts to use all the tools that we have available to us at present, we can't make a dent in them, because it's just too lucrative. The people who run these are going to keep making the money, and the only way we really can see... can see our way forward to deal with this situation is to find a way to eradicate them from having any ground in Wheat Ridge where they can operate. In 1982, a couple of criminal justice academics came up with what is referred to as the broken windows theory. This theory basically puts forth that, you know, if any area of a city is allowed to fall into some kind of state where the windows are broken and it's graffiti, that not fixing them or allowing that to exist in that state would welcome in more criminal activity. Now, this has been batted back and forth. Some say it's been debunked, some have not. But what I do know for certain is whether us being in a system right now that basically creates a situation where we can't effectively deal with these massage businesses, whether that in and of itself will bring more massage businesses into the city, I don't know. What I do know is there are cities like Aurora who have made some changes in their municipal code, and they are making great strides in eradicating this massage parlor business from their city. Those businesses making their money, they're going to go somewhere. And I do hope that we can get some tools in place that would allow us to not make that somewhere be Wheat Ridge. So I think, again, this is a quality-of-life issue, not just for the people who work here, the people who live here, but also for the people who find themselves, one way or another, indentured in these organizations. So I think Mr. Doll ultimately is going to talk to some solutions, but before he does that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and avail Detective Hemming to you for any questions that you might have with regard to what he's seen.
Thank you, Officer Guadnola. Do we have questions from council at this time? Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you. I know having this I-70 corridor run through our community presents a lot of challenges for us, and sex trafficking being one of them. So I'm all for stronger regulations so that we can manage these problems. I just have a few questions on some of the suggestions that were made, because as I'm looking at this, it seems to protect legitimate massage therapists, mostly if they're in like a corporate-type setting, so like Massage MV or something like that. So there are a few questions I have that I think could potentially be an issue if someone was a sole proprietor. And so the first one is, there was a suggestion that the massage business must employ a manager who's required to obtain a separate manager's license with a unique application form. Now, in the case of the manager and the massage therapist being the same person, because it's a sole proprietor, I wonder, is there something about, can it be the owner-operator that also has that manager license? How do they handle that in Aurora with those situations? And if it's something that, if it is owner-operated, their sole proprietor, and they now have to have a business license, a massage therapy license, and a business manager license separately, that's three separate licenses, and if that's something we could work on with fees?
Well, I think that the rationale for that, and in a sole proprietorship, I think that would be fine. The underlying rationale for that component exists in that a lot of these businesses have owners or managers who are entirely absentee. They collect the money on the back end, but if you ever go into any of these establishments to try to introduce yourself or meet them, they're not there. They can't be found. So this is one way that we were able to, or hope to put in place, some kind of check and balance to that absentee ownership type thing, to have somebody there who's accountable for that. Do you have anything on that?
No, and it's been our experience up to this point that, just as Commander Guadnola was saying, is that the employees most times don't know who the owner is, don't know who the manager is, don't know how to get ahold of anybody responsible for the property or them as an employee, and our efforts to have a separate managerial license would help combat that.
Responsive to your question, I think that in a true sole proprietor setting, we could provide for a combined license, a manager plus a massage therapist license, and I think we'd be able to structure it that way. Actually, that question has come up in some of the staff discussions we have had, because there are massage therapists that work out of their home. It's a home occupation for them. It's a recognized ability to have a home occupation in Wheat Ridge. There are many of them, and I think we can provide for a combined license. We will be requiring a license, however, in a setting in which there has not been in the past. The Aurora approach has been to provide for a single licensing approach for all practitioners under the theory that the requirements are capable of being addressed by or are not important to legitimate massage therapy businesses and are either incapable of, and are very difficult for an illicit massage operation to be able to fully comply with. And that's been, in a, really boiled down, that's kind of been their approach, to then be in an enforcement posture to be able to deal with the businesses that can't comply. But you got other questions?
Ms. Noslerbeck?
Sorry, I have a little frog on my throat, too. So I have a question just about, I have a friend who runs a massage business out of her home, but then goes and visits elderly residents and gives massage at their home. And then I also participate in basically like an Uber program of massage therapy. The company's called Soothe, and I can order a massage, like I could order one after the meeting today at my house. And so how does the licensing work for those going into other homes where there isn't a business?
That's a good question. I think you'd still get your massage therapist license, business license, from the city if you're going to be performing that work in the city. I think we'd probably have to write additional exemptions, not only like the ones for sole proprietorship, but for situations in which that business not providing the service exclusively in a fixed location where you can, where you can, you know, have all these other requirements. I suspect, and I'd be curious, if the department has a perspective on this, that that's probably not an enforcement concern for them, or maybe it is?
Well, I think the way our ordinance is geared is more towards a brick-and-mortar city-of-Wheat Ridge business versus like a traveling one, because I mean, it could be possible that a massage therapist from Denver gets summoned to Wheat Ridge to perform a massage, and I think that we'd run into some pretty significant issues trying to hold that person to a Wheat Ridge standard for, you know, an actual brick-and-mortar business.
Yeah, I think so. Where we will be providing for the licensing of massage therapists in Wheat Ridge, then if you're itinerant, but you're still in Wheat Ridge, then you do fall within the scope of our definition of having a license. I suspect that that fact pattern is not one that's raising the kind of criminal issues that we're concerned about, but your question's a valid one, which is, that's fine, but we don't want to unduly burden those people.
Right, that's what my concern is, is I would still like to use that service.
I think there's going to be ways to draft, to draft around that, similar to the question that Councilmember Hoppe raised.
Mr. Doll, does the department, does the state and the Department of Regulatory Agencies does not regulate massage anymore? It seemed like that they did at one time.
They did, and they've gotten out of the business of regulating massage parlors especially, and that's why it's kind of in our laps now.
But they don't license individuals as massage therapists?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Yes, so to better clarify that, to get a massage therapy license, you have to apply and take a test through the state, the Department of Regulatory Agencies, and you're licensed through the state of Colorado to provide massage therapy. What we're looking at is operating a massage business in Wheat Ridge. So in order to do that, you have to have the state licensing plus whatever Wheat Ridge city business licensing that we come up with.
So you would need to have a license from the DORA through the state as a licensed massage therapist in order to practice that profession in our city under these regulations that we're contemplating?
Yes, and I believe the way the proposed ordinance is written, the DORA licensing is a prerequisite to get a Wheat Ridge business license in that area.
A good analogy would be liquor licensing, where you've got to get a state license and a local license to sell liquor by the drink. I thought your question was about massage parlors, where the state has, you know, for quite some time occupied the field, and now is not. Other questions? At some point, I promise you, I realize there's a lot of detail in this four-page memo, and I thought before coming here tonight, how can I kind of group this or categorize this for council so that they can give, you know, some reasonable direction without spending, you know, half hour in each one of the 10 different points? And I've kind of grouped the recommendations into three categories. When you're ready for that discussion, I'm happy to have it, but if you have more questions now.
We've got a couple of questions I want to go to Ms. Hoppe and then Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in one of the suggestions, one of the requests under recommendations, it says to require entry doors to be unlocked during business hours with limited exceptions. Again, in the area of sole proprietor, I've used a lot of different, like individual sole proprietor massage therapists around town, and they are in buildings like, if you can imagine, they're in the, like, one was in, like where the Wheat Ridge pharmacy is, and they have all the little salons there. So if it's just the massage therapist and myself in a room in the back of that office, I don't feel comfortable as a client to have the front door unlocked. And so like, what type of exceptions can we make for those types of people? Because it could potentially be that there's three massage therapists, individual massage therapists, that work out of that office. It's got three rooms, but they don't keep track of each other's schedules. Everybody comes and goes, and only the appropriate people have a key to get in. And so can you talk about that situation, please?
Yes, in the proposed ordinance, there is verbiage to address that issue, in that if it's a sole proprietorship, like you mentioned, if it's, there's only one employee in the business at any given time, they're allowed, you know, they should be allowed to lock the door for their own safety if they're providing a massage, just in the example you stated.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of my questions relates to the licensing by DORA of massage therapists, and how many of the potentially illicit massage therapy locations in Wheat Ridge have a licensed, DORA-licensed massage therapist on site presently?
Without looking, you know, into specifics, I would say less than 20% actually have DORA licensing.
Okay. And so one of my questions is that, or one of my overarching concerns is we've consistently had this massage parlor licensing scheme within the city, but we've never licensed a single parlor within that scheme. And so as we go forward and enact this ordinance, how do we enforce it, and how do we kick them out of Wheat Ridge? I guess if I had my druthers, it would be that we pass an emergency ordinance, and anybody that is operating a massage therapy business without a licensed DORA massage therapist, that we just end that immediately. But how do we actually go about enforcing that?
Well, in addressing this issue, we've looked at the ways of starting the enforcement, identifying which ones we believe are illicit, and then moving on into figuring out how to deal with them. So I believe that we do have the ones that we've identified as being illicit. Once they're identified, certain criminal offenses can come of that. The most common one that we've encountered thus far is unauthorized practice, that's providing massage without a license. It's the easiest one for me to, you know, walk in on and catch, and people admit to That being said, that specific charge, if there's evidence to support that, we can move forward with a, like a summary revocation of their business license. And we've addressed the ways that we could make that happen. I believe that the city has a process for that in place. It just hasn't been utilized yet. So once the ordinance is in place, given, you know, there's a specific set of circumstances when met, qualify for a summary suspension of a license, whereas other ones, maybe not as, have such a high impact on public safety, perhaps, they, you know, could have a hearing for their business license revocation, you know, in 14 days or something like that. So that's the way that we would like to approach enforcing it, once it's in place.
The difference, I think, that is between the pattern we've had and presently on the books, and the suggestion is, the pattern we've had has been two forms of license. Massage parlor, not requiring a lot of the indicia of regular professional massage therapy. If you're in a massage parlor, here are the restrictions and the spacing restrictions, got to be in the industrial zone district. And the practice of massage therapy, which is allowed in commercial zone districts. Massage parlor operators have chosen not to apply and have simply shown up in commercial districts. And the difference between that regulatory scheme and the one proposed is, we won't have a massage parlor regulation at all. We'll have a single unified massage therapy regulation that admittedly is more stringent. And we'll need, as I've mentioned in Commander Guadnola's memo, I think it's on the third page, but I'll tell you what it says, and that's the experience in Aurora, and I think we would need to do this here, is reaching out to all massage businesses to alert them to the fact that this is pending, have sessions with them to work through issues such as the ones Councilmember Hoppe and Councilmember Noslerbeck mentioned about the impact on legitimate activities. And that was largely successful, I think, in Aurora. I think it's probably fair to say that some of the legitimate businesses were not wild about the idea of having more regulatory restrictions and things they needed to worry about, but in the end, they weren't challenged, and Aurora's got that system. But I wanted to point out that, yes, you're right, what we thought was going to work didn't. The sexually-oriented businesses' approach just did not work. And instead, we have two forms, but that has not served the city well. And a unified licensing scheme is the suggestion. I think that's why it's worked better for Aurora. And as mentioned by the detective, once that's in place, there are a series of enforcement techniques. I've tried to group them in my little list of three categories here. A series of enforcement techniques that the city can bring to bear, and I think they fully intend to bring to bear right away.
And just two more points on your question on DORA. One is, we have had circumstances where somebody that does have that license will open one of these up, and then, again, goes into that absentee sort of ownership. So we encounter that. And then, as far as DORA goes, too, that's one of the tools that Detective Hemming has used, and he cites the unauthorized practice many, many times, again and again, but it's just such a lucrative business to the people who are making the money, it doesn't matter whether or not they're authorized to practice.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. Mr. Doll, you were just talking about the zoning. So you're saying massage therapy can be in commercial, but massage parlors can be where?
Massage parlors in the city, just in the industrial zone district.
Only industrial? Okay, and so what is the, what is the suggestion, the suggested zoning appropriate for, if we go to this all-in-one new?
I think we would abandon this, put them out in the industrial district, hasn't worked anyhow. And instead, you'd merely say, okay, massage therapy can take place in commercial districts as it is taking place now, as legitimate massage therapy is taking place now. Here are the rules for that. So we would not use a zone them out of town zoning approach at all. It would be a, it's a use by writing that zone district, subject to this licensing scheme. That would be the approach.
And then I just have one other question about the, under the recommendations, the, it says revise the clothing requirements for employees, and I'm just asking, I mean, I can understand the really far end of that, of, you know, you have to have a certain amount of clothes on, but then there's the other far end of, we are not requiring uniforms. Is that?
As the ordinance is written right now, it's As the ordinance is written right now, it has language in there to designate that a massage therapy provider has to be fully clothed up to their neck and to the end of their wrists, I believe, the way it's written. That's a little old-fashioned, so we're going to take that out. But it also encompasses that, you know, a massage therapist can't answer the door in lingerie. So, it's taking out old stuff, but also making sure that we cover our bases as far as advertising for a sexually oriented business.
Super. So, with that, I would say that I am in support of the recommendations that staff is requesting, with the few things as far as, like, we make sure that we're not making a sole proprietor have three different licenses, and that they have to pay the three different fees for that, and that we are making modifications for sole proprietors and locked doors, and that, you know, I think that we should have a stakeholder meeting. It does say if council agrees, then we'll move forward with the first reading, but I think I'd like to have a stakeholder meeting first before the first reading comes. And I'm in support of those.
Mr. Dahl, have you run any cost figures on what it would cost a massage therapist to comply with these regulations?
No, that's a fair question. The elements of cost, of course, would just be the application fee, whatever it is that we're requiring now, I'm not sure, no.
Twenty dollars for a general business fee as it sits right now.
General business license.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So, we need to invent a fee, licensure fee. We'd want to have the fees at least enough to administer the cost, cover the cost administration of the program. Probably what you're also asking is, yes, but if I've, if I've got to, you know, follow these other requirements, is that, what are those costs? My suspicion, I appreciate the department weighing in, is if you're a massage envy operation, physically, you probably don't have to change anything at all in your brick and mortar operation. You will need to make sure your, all of your therapists have massage therapy licenses, and you have a business license, which you already have for that business. You'll want to make sure that you also have a manager-operator license. That might be new, as against what we're requiring now. So, there'd be some fees for a license, and, but likely not a lot of change to the brick and mortar aspect of the business.
Okay, I guess I, I think we ought to run some numbers, and I, you know, it sounds good for the licensees to pay for the program, although that's a bit of an open-ended financial obligation, so I'm not sure that there's a direct correlation there.
I agree with you. I mean, our scheme in the city is that there are specific dollar amounts for individual kinds of licenses that are applied for. Sometimes, the money the city gets is enough to truly cover the staff costs, sometimes it isn't, but that really hasn't been the driving feature of the city's setting fees, and I wouldn't expect it would be here.
Okay. Ms. Dozeman?
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. One is about compliance. What kind of a window are we going to allow for the businesses to come into compliance with the new regulations?
I'd like to defer to the department on this, but I will tell you that I think that it will be, it'll be important to have, from my perspective, to have equal treatment for anyone that wants, that is performing massage therapy and wants to comply. We, I think, will want to have a stakeholder meeting and reach out to everyone, because, again, it's a unified licensing system. Anyone's providing massage therapy gets the invite, and broadcast when the ordinance would be in effect. And it would seem to me that, at most, you could delay the effectiveness of the licensing requirements for some period of time to conceive of people having to get their license applications in and processed. Beyond that, beyond that, I can't think that we would, especially if there had been outreach, hello, this is coming. We had a meeting, we had, before the ordinance was adopted, we asked for comments, we responded to those comments, made changes, had public hearings here. When the ordinance adopted on the second reading, then, another mailing, hello, this ordinance has been adopted, here's what it now requires. Its effective date is really, pretty quickly, you know, within a few weeks, a month, maybe. You will need to be advised, you need to apply for and receive licenses. That'd be my general approach, but tell me if I've put together a schedule you don't agree with.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think that's what we, in our working group, I think that adequately reflects our thought process.
Also, we've been discussing Aurora, but my concern is that if we start shutting these facilities down in Wheat Ridge, that it's just kind of going to dissipate in our community and go elsewhere. So, is this a regional issue that's being addressed? Are you, are you discussing this with adjacent communities as to how, you know, we're going to address it in county and the state?
The department, I'm sure can, I'm aware that there's a lot of conversation, no more than I.
Well, it is a, it is a large problem, and one that unfortunately goes to a lot of different service providers in the area. There was, you know, with impending budget cuts in Jefferson County, and some of the action that they're going to have to be taking, they'll be scaling back some of the things that they do in this. They, for a long time, took the lead on human trafficking and had a very well-respected investigator who would respond any day or night to come out and help with our cases, with cases anywhere in the First Judicial District. He took a position with CBI, and that's a very specialized sort of position. So, the short version of your answer is, there are a lot of communities looking at these ordinances, whether it's a coordinated approach. I don't know how coordinated it would be on a broad perspective at this point. I think each municipality, at least from the police perspective, wants to do everything it can to keep their community safe. And there's a couple of different tenets in community policing on how we address problems, and one of those is doing whatever we can, if we can't eradicate the problem, to get it out and push it out of our communities. And unfortunately, that is what the Aurora ordinance is going to be doing. It's going to be pushing it out toward us. We're more than happy to work with any of these other providers to combat in some unified way this issue, but broadly, at this point, there's no real unified effort.
And a way to put that in perspective is the Aurora ordinance is fairly new, it's like, less than two years old. So, they're kind of leading the way in the battle of this front, where they've kind of identified a successful solution where others have failed in the past, to eradicate it from their community. And unfortunately, it does push it to others, but if, as time goes on, perhaps, you know, this ordinance will be adopted other places, and it, there'll be no safe haven for these businesses to flourish, and then they'll hopefully go out of business.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, there's a comment in the memo about a requirement authorizing regular inspections and include the right of the city to inspect as a condition of licensure. Can you comment a little bit more about what that might look like, and how that would balance against sort of more legitimate massage practices versus some of the illicit ones you're hoping to impact with this?
As a preliminary step in the investigation into these types of businesses, I went to at least 30 different businesses, and I found very quickly that the legitimate businesses welcomed me with open arms, show me their books, you know, things of that nature, they don't have any problem with me being there. Whereas the illicit ones, people run out the back, the doors are locked, you know, people hide, things like that. So, a standard inspection is basically, I go there, I enter the business, I ask to see their DORA licensing, and look at the layout of the building. I'm looking for, you know, signs of legitimate business or signs of illicit business, you know, living quarters. There's an item called a shower table that is not exactly found in very many legitimate businesses, you know, cooking implements, stuff like that, that kind of show that a business could possibly be illicit. So, those are the kinds of inspections. I don't believe that any one of the legitimate ones that I've visited felt that it was intrusive in any way. So, it's kind of like a stop-by, how's everything going kind of thing, and go from there.
Thank you. I think that that's a really important element of this, is to not just be issuing a license and assuming everything's good after that license has been issued. A second question I have, and this is kind of in my hazy back brain, but I seem to remember there's some distinction between the operations of a massage business and a spa. Am I remembering correctly that, like, if you are designating yourself a spa, it's a different regulatory environment? Am I, am I making that up entirely possible? But in part, because we have one down the street from where I live that calls itself a spa, and I remember that there was some distinction in terms of what spas were and what massage parlors were. Am I?
Well, you know, the spa, I'm sure, can offer massage therapy, it can offer skin treatments, it can offer a sauna. My take would be on that, that it may well, massage therapy may be one of the services you can get at a spa, but you can get other services. What we're trying to regulate here is the practice of massage therapy, which might require that a spa owner get a license to, under this unified system, to provide the massage therapy in that spa context.
Okay, so you'd be reaching out to spas then, as part of this, to see if that's inclusive with, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as that goes, like, if a, like, my chiropractor has a massage therapist, so he would have to go through the same licensing, all that stuff as well? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to move us forward to a consensus. Oh, yep.
Ms. Weaver?
I was just curious on this, the spa issue that was just brought up. What stops these businesses from just then becoming a spa? And our spa's regulated, because it's sort of, I think about the kinds of services that are also offered at a spa being sort of this, you, it could be seen as a couple different ways, and I was just curious if one of the officers could just speak to that. Do we need to be more inclusive of other types of businesses that this could just shift to?
I don't believe so. I know that we have, Detective Hemming has done inspections at places of all titles, and the notion that they'd be able to hide behind a dictionary from this, I'm not sure that that would work. If they're providing massage therapy and are required to have a license under DORA, then I think that would be.
Thank you.
It looks like Councilwoman Hoppe is ready to move forward to the consensus. Is there any further questions that we want before that? So, Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a consensus to move forward the recommendations by staff as outlined in the memo, with the few changes that we've discussed, such as being able to make exceptions for sole proprietors when it comes to licensing, having a manager license, and requiring that doors be unlocked. And with the exception of having the stakeholder meeting before first reading.
Is there consensus on that? We have consensus on that. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for that presentation. Very good. We will go on to item number three on our agenda. This is the ethics code, Mr. Goff.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say Mr. Goff? Mr. Dahl. This will be Mr. Dahl again.
Well, then, we're going to go to Mr. Dahl.
Yes, thank you. But I know that you always ask Mr. Goff if.
I didn't want to bypass Mr. Goff on this, he's the head guy.
I was, I know, I was expecting him to do the handoff, you know, here I am. Council, you have a memorandum in the packet on ethics to you from Mr. Goff, and it attaches a memorandum from me to the council dated June 24 of this year. As the council members who are incumbent will recall, we brought this to the council in the summer, and there was a fair amount of discussion, debate, and I think we refined the version of the ordinance that was kind of in draft at that point. And my recollection, from a procedural standpoint as council, said, okay, let's not move this forward for adoption just yet, and let's kind of put it on a future study session. We're at that future study session. So, to bring us up to date, I think I'll work off of the June 24 memo, which is the second page here. The city does have two provisions in its charter regarding ethics, but they're very minimal. It's Charter Section 3.14 and 410 on conflicts of interest, and they're very, very short. Meanwhile, in 2006, the citizens of the state enacted a citizen initiative amendment 41 that added section or article 29 to the Constitution, Ethics in Government, and did a number of things, and created an independent Ethics Commission, which is a statewide commission that is charged with enforcement of the Ethics in Government constitutional provision and state statutes that relate to that. The Constitution addressed gift bans for public officials, so they're not duly influenced by being given gifts, restrictions on representation of private interests after you leave office, the revolving door, and conflicts of interest, appearance of impropriety, and, as I said, post-government employment. So, it's a fairly broad range of ethical concerns for local government, or for all government officials, state and local. And the Independent Ethics Commission was given the authority to entertain complaints and deal with the prosecution of alleged violations under the Constitution and the statutes. There is, as you see in my memo on this first page, Article 29 specifically states that home-rule municipalities can adopt their own rules on this, which is good, because that's the, one of the classic advantages of being home-rule. Wheat Ridge is a home-rule municipality, and can enact its own rules that the usual rule of law is displaces the state system and does your own. You can do the same thing with elections, a number of other matters that are considered to be exclusively of local concern. Glendale did so, or thought they did so, in enacting an ethics code, and they thought they were fine. Within the last, oh, I think, five years or so, I'm lost track of exactly when it was filed, but a citizen filed an ethics complaint with the IEC, the Independent Ethics Commission, at the state level against the Glendale's mayor, Mayor Donovan. And the city responded by saying, wait a minute, we adopted our own system for this. Why are we being, why is it necessary that we be brought in front of the Independent Ethics Commission because of that exception? And the court eventually held, Glendale, you're right, you have enacted a system that addresses the same subjects largely, as in the Constitution, not in the same way. And interestingly, I think the Independent Ethics Commission was arguing that you can only benefit from this exemption as a home-rule municipality unless your rules were more restrictive than the state system. And the court did not buy that either, which I'm glad to hear, because if there's, if home-rule and local control is to mean anything, it means that you, that if you have the ability to enact something in a system, it can be, on a subject, it can be different. Not only that it can only be more restrictive, or else you're out of, out of the business of locally legislating for your own local rules. So, I was glad to see that. But that brought me to look carefully at what the city had done here, to see if there's the same argument that Glendale made, and successfully, we've got a complete system. It's not the same as yours, state, but it's complete, basically. It covers the main issues. And in my judgment, it doesn't. The sections of the Wheat Ridge Charter, and there are only two, 3.14 is conflict of interest, one paragraph, and 4.10 is, again, also conflict of interest. There's one for elected officials and one for members of the council, but they're largely, largely the same, and so, you can't have a material or significant financial interest with the city. If you have such an interest, you disclose it, the rest of the council. the council decides what to do. So, no mention of gift bans, for example. And so, we sort of boiled down what we thought would be appropriate augmentation to the city's system, which doesn't have to be in the charter, can obviously be in the code, and that's what's being proposed, to be able to be in the position of saying, our ethics and conflicts of interest system is complete enough that the IEC does not have jurisdiction. If there's to be a complaint about a gift ban or conflict of interest here at the city, then it has to be filed with this council. And that is the draft ordinance, which is probably the thing to look at next. After all the memos, I think there's a copy of the Article 29, the constitution, but there's a draft ordinance, Council Bill 10, if you see that toward the end of this package on ethics.
Is that attachment four, Mr. Dahl?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. Attachment four. So this is the draft we put together, responding to some extent to the discussion that was had, but not entirely. So what you have is there's kind of the draft as it was left at the end of the last study session. And let me make a few points about that, and then open for questions. We can decide what kind of direction you want to give us to move forward. There's probably at least three doors, but we'll get to those. Importantly, the gifts and gratuities or some form of gift regulation is completely absent in Wheat Ridge's code or charter. And I believe that exposes you to enforcement at the IEC. Not that that's necessarily bad, but if the idea is you want to have your own local rules, this is one of the places you do need to have them. And you will see that we structured a new gifts and gratuities provision that says you can't accept a gift which a reasonable person realizes might be there to influence you. And that's the rule. And then there's a lot of exceptions. Turning the page, there's a whole list of things, as it should be, and as is true in Article 29 and in the statutes. Here are all the things that are considered gifts that get you in trouble. And there's a giant list, starting with campaign contributions, all the way down to gratuities received by the judge, which I think came out of a study session. I think it was Councilmember Urban mentioned that. The judge gets, Judge Randall, who swore some of you in tonight, performs weddings, and that's a source of income for judges. And they do that, and I'm glad they do. But that's not considered a gift that is a conflict. So you see the list, reimbursement for necessary expenses in attending a conference, ability to participate in a social function that's not extraordinary, perishable items, tickets to sporting events, those kinds of things. Now, you certainly can, because you're writing your own rules, dial that exception list up or down. You'll notice that of the 10 things there, there are some that maybe in your judgment, you ought to say are inappropriate, or ought to have a dollar number on them. And I intentionally did not do that. This is kind of a working draft for you. But that's where you have the ability to turn the dial up or down. Subjectively, that is your legislative choice, no matter how you turn it up or down, as long as you don't completely eliminate it. You have created your own local system that then occupies the field with respect to the Independent Ethics Commission. Two other points I want to make, and have to take questions. The other two suggested sections are a little bit of an augmentation on conflicts of interest, that's saying, look, you're governed by these two sections of the charter that I just mentioned, but as well, from deriving this from the constitution and the statutes, you should not be using confidential information required in the course of your duties to further your own financial interests. And that's a good rule, I believe. I haven't ever seen that, you know, taking place here in Wheat Ridge. But if we're to augment our pretty minimal conflicts of interest sections in the charter, this is what I would augment it with, because I see this kind of language elsewhere. So that's the addition of conflicts of interest. Lastly, enforcement. Right now, under the charter, if there's a conflict of interest that you declare, the council thinks you have, it just says, the council can take any action that it deems necessary. And that's all. That's all the process that's found in the charter. And for this ordinance, we elaborated on that to give the council the exclusive authority. I felt it was important to make sure it says that, so that there's not parallel authority in the Independent Ethics Commission. Says when complaints need to be filed, complaints that are frivolous can be dismissed. But in the end, it's the council that decides this. There's not another body that you defer to, and I'm not suggesting there should be. I think that you are, by charter, you're in charge of deciding what happens when a conflict's declared. And that's what the charter says. And of course, no ordinance can change that rule. So it was important to color within those lines, and that's what this does. And it really just kind of elaborates a little bit on a process that the council could use to, quote, "decide what to do," as the charter says, shall take such action as it deems appropriate. I don't think that's the exact language. It's pretty close. That's what the charter does. So that's what's on the table. That's what council discussed. I think they refined it a little bit back in June or July, and then said, let's roll it over for a study session. Now, it's true that we haven't had any complaints to the Independent Ethics Commission since I've been the city attorney, just since Article 29 was adopted. And maybe there never will be. Or maybe you may come to the conclusion, if there are, we're actually okay with someone else handling that. These are the policy choices. I don't mean to say that you don't have that choice. You absolutely do. This is not a situation where I'm saying you really need to do this, because there is a system in place. It's a state system. And if you're okay with that, then so am I. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to choose if you wish to keep it local.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. We'll open this to questions. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at attachment four, so half of us were, have had this conversation in depth several times now at this point, and half of us have not. So I just wanted to point out three things. One of the things that came out of the discussion on second reading, Councilmember Urban asked that we change the language under Section 2, 102, oh, wait, Section 2, 100(c)(10). It reads gratuities received by the municipal judge for services rendered in addition to official judge duties, AG, marriage ceremonies. And he had asked that we change that, the language in that to related to official judge duties. And so that's just one thing that I had supported then, and I would like to, I would hope to see in our final consensus as we move forward. Another thing that we had done is if you look under Section 2, 102i, the city attorney, actually, I dug up my notes from the last meeting, the city attorney had suggested that we delete i. The penalties provided for in this section shall not preclude the application of any other penalty or remedy under law. And so I supported that then, and I would like to support that in a consensus moving forward. Now, one thing that was brought up in, but it was in the, in the form of a question that Councilmember Urban brought up, that I think is a good question, but I also think it's something that we could look at adding to this ordinance. And the question was, you know, do you get to choose whether you'll be heard by the Wheat Ridge or State Commission to hear the complaint? And that's not in this ordinance. And I think that it's something, I think that's important, because it does help us address if someone feels like there's a complaint, and then they feel like they won't have an equal and fair hearing by their peers, then they can choose to go to the State Commission. And so that's something that I would like to add to this ordinance. And then my opinion on this ordinance is that it's good, and that it's important that as a home rule municipality, that we take the opportunities that we can to make our own ordinances and rules and regulations around this stuff.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some questions for the city attorney. As it relates to being able to write our own rules, is there a way to say, we want to handle the complaints first, and then if we find them to be with merit, then we can refer them on to the state? Or does the state get the ability to participate regardless? Or can we say, our rule is actually to receive the complaint in-house and then decide to refer it on, without necessarily opening ourselves up to being totally privy to the state's commission?
Yeah, that's a good question, because what it sort of implies is that you can, you can sort of manage the jurisdiction of the IEC. And I'm not sure you can. There may be a way, what I'd like to do is a little thinking about that, a little potential drafting, because there may be a way to craft as such that if the city, through some procedure, chooses not to exercise its jurisdiction, then the IEC can, rather than you sort of being the ones to tell IEC, okay, here's a case that you now have to take up at kind of this point in its life. That, I think, you don't have the authority to do. But, so you'd need to be able, I think we can maybe get there, but you need to be able to, need to be able to draft it so that there's a choice that the city process is not going to apply, and that the city recognizes in that instance that the IEC has jurisdiction. Then someone would have to file a complaint with the IEC. I would expect, if I were the person complaining, if I were citizens complaining about an action that you had taken, and the council had occupied the field and said, no, we're going to deal with this here, and then council made a decision under this language I haven't invented yet, to say, okay, we're going to defer our jurisdiction. We're going to step aside. Then I, as a complainant, I think, would be, especially if we said so kind of overtly, I, as a complainant, could then file a complaint with the IEC. And I think there's a way to navigate that. It's creative, but I think it can be done. What I think we can't do is sort of say, we've taken it this far, IEC, now you take the rest the way. That's kind of this combined jurisdiction. I don't think we have.
Well, and to play that out a little bit further, I also want to confirm that upon a referral to the state, and the state chooses not to nibble on that particular complaint, then that's that, that the city no longer has jurisdiction, the state doesn't want any part of it, and it is a dead issue. I guess just to kind of also make sure we have some finality to this process, so someone isn't necessarily involved in an investigation without any definitive end or closure process.
I agree with that. I think you can absolutely do that. And if you choose not to exercise your process, your process, if we write it this way, will be clear that the IEC's jurisdiction can apply. If they choose to do a case or not, then it's the end of that. You'll notice for the city actions, where they're held by the city, I think we provided some timeframe, if I'm not mistaken, 90 days.
Ninety days.
Because I agree with you, there should be. You don't want these things hanging over anywhere indefinitely.
So, Mr. Dahl, is it that either party could stipulate that they didn't want to have council as the deciding body? So either council could decide, we don't want this case, or the defendant doesn't want that case. Either one could...
I think you could provide for both. So you could say something like, in the event a complaint is filed, the person against whom the complaint has the option to demand that the city defer its jurisdiction to the IEC. The council similarly has the option to choose to defer, not pursue enforcement and defer any enforcement, any enforcement coming, if any, to the IEC, because the IEC might well say, I'm not doing anything. But yeah, I think you could write it that way.
Is that kind of what you have in mind? Okay, good. Additional questions? We'll start here and go around the room. Mr. Stites?
I know this says, final action by the council or city manager is appropriate, shall be final. Is there any appeals process at all, as far as going to the IEC? Maybe if you don't like whatever the council comes up with, or is that, that's it?
No, if you're going to occupy the field and displace the IEC, you're done. If it's final action of the city, I suppose someone could try to bring some kind of district court action, because as anyone can, as I often tell the council, if you have the price of a filing fee, you can get into district court and ask the court to look at it. But I think it'd be rare for the court to take up such a case. But you are right that it wouldn't, it would be final at the city level.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Holten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. If a case is deferred from Wheat Ridge to the IEC, would they be enforcing, they would be looking at our adopted code of ethics? We wouldn't be...
No, I think they'd be looking at the constitution and their rules, because while you can occupy the field for the city, if you choose not to apply your rules and have a sort of an option to, for deferred action, you know, goes out to some other jurisdiction, or to the IEC in this case, they would not, you can't empower them to, the power they have is to enforce the state constitution and statutes. So it would, whatever the complaint were, it would get litigated in front of them under the constitution.
So in that instance, we would be having to hold ourselves accountable both to our own adopted, as well as the state's? Is that correct?
Not really. As I understand, the way it would happen is if you, if the city chooses to enforce, it does. And it's per the rules as written here, with the exceptions on the judge, and, you know, just the local, that's the essence of local control. It's kind of right now for the situation here. Or, as I've heard it expressed, that you want to have it said, the person about whom the complaint is filed says, I'd rather the IEC hear this one. And okay. But if the IEC hears it, whether you defer or whether the person charged defers, it's not going to be heard against the city's rules, and instead it'll be heard as against the state system. Yeah, they're close, but, you know, you're talking about some changes here. And while they're close, they're not the same, but they go to the same policy, of course.
So I guess my concern is that if either party can choose to defer, then essentially, I mean, even though they are very similar, and there are some nuances, we would be having to comply with both. Because if someone filing the complaint decided that they were going to file, defer to the IEC, then essentially, we're having to comply at the get-go, because it's not our jurisdiction to make that decision.
Well, it's true that you will never know if you're about to receive a gift.
Right.
And that gift might be okay under the Wheat Ridge rules, not okay under the Article 29 of the constitution. You go, okay. If I'm challenged on this, I'm not sure what the, well, I know, as a council member, that I want to be held to the Wheat Ridge rules. But the council might not agree, and in that fact pattern, they could say that that's great, but we're going to defer, and now you're at the IEC. So there is that risk, I agree, in that, the structure we're talking about.
Additional questions?
Around this particular topic, I'd like, because this is a wrinkle that I'd like to explore a little bit by looking at the IECs, not only the constitution, but they've issued a book of opinions, written decisions, that's probably this thick. There was a time I had to research them, and that was a couple of years ago, and it was this thick. So I'm sure that's thicker now, that takes up every fact pattern you can think of, plane rides and sporting tickets. And I'd like to see if in there, there's any sense of this dual jurisdiction concept, and sort of what they have done with that. Because while I'm sitting here, I can kind of conceive of how we might write that up. I want to make sure that we're headed down a road that will work for them and end up achieving what you're suggesting. So it looks, at a minimum, I think we're probably into a little bit of drafting and be coming back in a study session with that report, so that we don't have something that comes back to second reading. I'd forgotten we actually had a second reading on this, that isn't quite ready. Sorry to interrupt. I know there's a question. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the enforcement section, we talk about complaints deemed to be frivolous shall remain confidential. So at what point is any of this going to be confidential? Because in my mind, everything is out in the open, so there is nothing to be confidential about.
Thank you. There was a lot of discussion about this last time around, and I think I added that, to the greatest extent permitted by law, because I... to the greatest extent permitted by law, because I knew in my heart that these complaints are public documents. There's not an exception under the Open Records Act for a complaint like this. There just isn't, and it seems to me you could deal with frivolous complaints with a little less process. You could say, we hereby, you know, it's a public session, we hereby declare that as a frivolous complaint, and we're going to dismiss it without further process. That, in my way of thinking, is the most you can do around frivolous complaints, respectfully under the open meetings law and the open records law. So to the greatest extent possible permitted by law was me making sure that we didn't do something here that violated the Open Records Act.
And I guess, and do we have to dismiss frivolous complaints, or can we just ignore them?
I think that there has to be some sort of action by you to say it's frivolous, you know, unless you were to try to define what a frivolous complaint is, the following complaints will, are deemed to be frivolous and will not be further processed, and put together a list. Trying to think what that might be, is the problem. They're so fact-specific, so case by case, I think you're going to be stuck with having to say, we've got this, and in that context, you could take a very quick motion that says, okay, I'm going to move that this complaint be declared frivolous, dismissed, not further processed, as opposed to having a hearing or whatever else you might do. That's, once you're in the system, I think you kind of have to address everything that comes to you.
And I guess that's one of my concerns about this as it goes forward, is that a frivolous complaint about someone's ethics is successful just in uttering that phrase. So that's what I'm concerned about here, is that even having to deny frivolous complaints puts it in that realm that now we're talking about somebody's ethics, and I just have a concern about that, and wanted to try to figure out a way of us preempting that to say that there's been no cases that have been brought forward, as opposed to say, we're going to dismiss X, Y, and Z. And it's not to, you know, obscure anything or to not be transparent, it's just trying to understand the weaponizing of this type of process. So I just want to try to figure out a way to avoid that.
Mr. Dahl, would one still have recourse to the libel laws or the slander laws?
Yes, one would, but I'm here to tell you that the libel and slander remedies as against public officials, there's a very high bar to be able to say as a public official that you've been libeled or slandered, understanding when you put your name on a ballot and you get up here, that comes with the territory. Private citizens have better protection than public officials do.
Noted, thank you. Additional discussion? Ms. Noslerbeck?
I just wanted to, just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Urban said. So wouldn't we just do what the IEC does with frivolous complaints? Like, what do they do?
Well, they dismiss them. I think they, I'm trying to, I'd have to look at that big book I keep promising to look at, see kind of how they have winnowed through that. It's been a while since I've had to do that. That's probably another part of the research I guess I'd like to do, and maybe I can bring some techniques back to you that have worked for them, because I'm sure they get a lot of stuff that's just intended really just to hassle the elected official and isn't, you know, they have to winnow through that. And there's some substantive things, too. Not to say there are, there absolutely are, that's why they're doing their job. I'm happy to look at that in addition to this jurisdictional issue.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if council would like to make consensus on the two other things that we had come to consensus on, and then maybe try to move forward to have our city attorney work on the other issues that we brought up at this meeting. So the first one would be, I'd look for a consensus to change the language in Section 2, 100(c)(10) to read "related to" rather than rendering. This is in relation to the judge, so I'd like to ask for consensus on that language change.
Okay, we have a language change there, striking the word rendered.
Related to, or if that, I mean, changing the language so that it reads more in "related to" rather than, I don't think it's just that one word, you have to change the word in also.
Okay.
Okay, and then to follow the recommendation of the city attorney from the last time we saw this, and that would be the deletion of Section 2-102i. That reads, the penalties provided for in this section shall not preclude the application of any other penalty or remedy under law.
To strike that provision?
We have consensus to strike "i."
Strike "i," we have consensus to strike "i."
And then I would like to ask for consensus to direct the city attorney to move forward with the direction that has been given in this meeting as far as the additions that we've requested more information on.
And bring it back to a study session?
And bring back to another study session.
Ms. Hutchinson?
So, since I've only seen this for four days, okay, when I see that voters voted to have this commission formed, there was a reason for that, all right? And I feel ethics in government, for us to make decisions on, like, what's frivolous, what's not, that's subjective, okay? So I understand about home rule, but I also know about ethics in government, and there have been other local governments around that have had issues. So I believe IEC needs to be involved in this. For us to sit up here and go, oh, no, that's fine, it's okay, it's not okay, or whatever, I think it's beyond us. I'm not a lawyer, so I would like IEC to be involved for sure in this, and it just keeps us clean, and I want us to be clean. Even though nothing's happened here before, you never know, and that's just my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hoppe?
Yes, I would like to ask for consensus to move forward with the information that we have given the city attorney to bring back to another study session.
Okay, we have consensus on that. Does that give you all the information you need?
It does, thank you very much.
Mr. Dahl, what does this do with the original ordinance? It came to council, a public hearing wasn't voted on, do we delete that ordinance, get rid of that number, reuse the number?
Yeah, we can talk, I'm inclined, when, if it does come back into the process, what we might consider doing is postponing indefinitely Council Bill Number 10 and initiating a new ordinance with a new number.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dahl. We are at item number four, staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we will go to elected officials' reports, and I'll start with Ms. Noslerbeck. Anything for tonight?
I'd just like to say, it's great to be here, it's an honor and a privilege to be up here with everyone that was recently elected, and it's an honor. I'm looking forward to learning from everyone who's been up here for a few years. And then I'd also like to thank Councilman Larry Matthews, he's left, but, you know, I just wanted to thank him for all of his work with, working with residents and making their voices heard. So thank you very much. And I'd also just like to say, everybody get your flu shots, because there are flu, the flu is running rampant.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me, I will do that. Ms. Hutchinson?
Whoops, sorry. I would just like to thank the people that, who supported me, and who worked with me, and who also voted for me so that I could be here, and I will do my best for the citizens and also the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
I would just like to congratulate everyone again, and also say thank you to my former co-council, Larry Matthews, for his work in taking me under his wing and having robust conversations and meeting with citizens, and I look forward to working with Ms., do you go by Noslerbeck?
That's what I go by.
Okay, all right, there you go.
Okay, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to announce that the Jefferson County Housing Authority recently received an additional 75 vouchers for non-elderly disabled folks who are currently experiencing homelessness or who have other situations that mirror that experience, and that those vouchers are available through a partnership with Family Tree, the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, and other providers. So those that are interested in applying for that would be people currently experiencing homelessness, and they would apply through an organization such as Family Tree. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like others, I want to just express my gratitude to Councilwoman Davis for her service to the city. I'm honored to be next in line behind her, and I'm really excited to serve with those of us who are up here today. And I really want to thank all the people in District 2, whether they voted for me or not, those who voted, those who opened their doors when I knocked. There's a lot of great people that are in our city, and there's a lot of exciting things going on, and I think we have some good conversations ahead of us, and I think our city just really benefited from a positive and robust campaign, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I want to thank the voters and everybody from District 3 who supported me and not, either way, but this is something I've wanted to do since I was like two and a half years old and hanging out with my grandfather and all that stuff, so I'm really excited to be here, and I definitely want to thank Councilmember George Pond for not only helping me out through the campaign, but smoothing this transition through, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say congratulations to everyone who has won and has now made it officially through their first study session. Yay. I also want to say the holidays are coming up. We have, you know, Thanksgiving next week, we only have three meetings in December, and I would like, if you are able to help Family Tree out with their Holidays of Hope, you can see how you can help them out at thefamilytree.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to once again thank the counselors and other elected officials who have completed their term and thank them for their service. I would like to welcome all of our new electeds to the dais and to the offices that they've been sworn into, and I look forward to working with them and hope that we continue to make progress and keep our little city moving forward. I was appreciative to our Vada Chamber of Commerce for an event with several other mayors last Friday. We had a good time, and it was nice to represent our city at that forum, and I'd like to, you know, let's see, we've got another meeting before Thanksgiving, so I'll wait for that announcement for then. So if there's no more business to come before us, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.